In behalf of the City of Port Angeles City Council, members of the council here joining me this evening, I want to welcome each of you who have come out this evening for this special town hall meeting on an extraordinarily important topic. I'm struck, as I often when I come to see council meetings, and this evening is no different, that it is in small towns like ours that we could do things like this. It provides an opportunity for us citizens of various ages, shapes, and sizes to be able to converse with those that are fellow, our neighbors, our friends, professionals. This meeting is intended to give you an opportunity to raise questions, to have some concerns answered, I hope. We have an extraordinary panel of professionals surrounding me this evening. In just a moment, I'm going to turn it to Mike Overe to talk off, who is going to be our moderator this evening, but just before I do that, I again want to thank you for being here. Encourage any and all to take this opportunity between now and 8:05 to share your concerns. Be candid. Don't be bashful. Don't be timid. This is, in my opinion, the overarching health and wellness issue of our community. We may be a small town, but we're no different than the big cities across America and small towns all across the United States. Those things that are plaguing us regarding opioid addictions and issues surrounding that have a devastating impact on our community, we recognize that. But I consider amongst those that are sitting amongst us at our diocese here and there to my right, these are ladies and gentlemen, these are professionals who work daily, hourly, trying to help those that have serious issues in their lives. Please, take the opportunity to talk to them. Pretend this is your very own living room. Let's have a wonderful experience together. Let's grow together. Let's learn together. Let's work together as a community on this issue. Thank you for being here. With that said, I'll turn the mic over to Todd.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Downey, and thank you, everybody, for being here. I'm going to be moderating this, but it really is a conversation. The only thing that I'm going to say is we have a lot of panelists. Here's how the ground rules are going to work. We're going to give each of these folks a minute or so to introduce themselves and talk a bit about what they represent or what organization they're with. But really, we want to get into where there's questions from you. We have a huge crowd, so I'm going to ask that people try to formulate your questions just as that, as a question. I realize people can get pretty impassioned about some things, and if you can keep things focused a bit, it's going to give us a chance to get multiple answers perhaps as well. So after we hear from these folks, I'm going to have people start to light up over here to ask a question. And we're going to just work on the honor system here tonight. And let's let everybody have a shot at a question first before you come back with another one. And if your question gets answered, please let somebody else take your spot, because it's really about trying to get as many people a chance to get their questions in. So with that, we have 120 minutes, well, less than that right now, because at 8 o'clock or shortly after 8:00, according to that clock, we have to be out of here. So let's be efficient, but let's learn a whole lot, because this is an opportunity from a whole wide range of professionals here that are working on a very, very serious problem that's not only plaguing our community, but really our entire country for that matter. So with that, I'm going to give each of our panelists, I guess we'll just start right over here, and we'll go to Gail McCormick first. Maybe we'll do first row and then go to the back row here. Just a brief introduction and who you're with.
My name is Gail McCormick. I'm a chemical dependency professional. I'm the clinical director at Reflections Counseling Services. I've been in the field since 1977. At Reflections, we have walk-in services Monday through Friday at 10:00 a.m. You can walk in without an appointment, a family member, or an addict seeking services, and can be seen by one of our counselors. Also, we have crisis intervention. One of our counselors, Travis Teed, he goes out to the hospital, the detox, to people's homes, and helps if somebody is in crisis due to opioid addiction. Tonight, I have the administrator, Janelle Ashley. Would you stand, Janelle? And she has brochures and cards, so if any of you are wanting to know more about treatment services, feel free to get something from her. We do residential placement, and we do intensive outpatient and outpatient services, and we have family services available for family members who have a person they love who is in trouble. And that service is free on a grant most of the time. So if you have problems in that area, just make that call and come and see us.
I'm Viola Ware. As a program director of coordinated intake with Surinamese County, our focus is housing, no barrier shelter, because we know that when people are safely housed and safely sheltered, they have better outcomes in mental health and in dealing with their issues with addiction. And also, the impact of the community decreases the longer they are housed.
My name is Wendy Sisk, and I'm the CEO at Peninsula Behavioral Health. Peninsula Behavioral Health has been a part of this community since 1971, primarily providing mental health services, but over the years, we provided co-occurring mental health and substance use disorder services as well. Currently, we have a full-time position that serves the syringe exchange and Clonan County Jail, providing intervention in the jail, often helping create treatment linkage from incarceration into the community. I'm currently serving as the chairperson on the three-county opioid response treatment work group, and that work group begins tomorrow in Port Townsend at 10:00 a.m. If you want more information, please see me after. And we're also working on some grant opportunities right now as well, or some other funding opportunities, to do more diversion work with our local law enforcement. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nathan West. I'm the Director of Community Economic Development for the City of Port Angeles. One of my areas of responsibility is the city's comprehensive plan, and I can tell you that last year, we conducted a very intensive public input session where we learned what the community's priorities are, and I can tell you, this was a priority topic that came forward in that comprehensive plan discussion, and one that we greatly care about relative to the health of our city. I think, too, it's important that my responsibility also has the administration of the community development block grant program for the City of Port Angeles, which can provide funding assistance for housing rehabilitation and other housing needs for low-income individuals in the community, which very much has a correlation to the issue we're discussing this evening. Additionally, I also work with local businesses in economic development, and many of our businesses are experiencing behavioral impacts from drug abuse that impact them on a regular basis, and we work with those businesses to resolve those issues. And then finally, from a code compliance perspective, oftentimes, we will see issues associated with neighborhoods impacted by code compliance issues, and those are also issues that we work on in my department.
My name is Steve Johnson. I'm a deputy prosecuting attorney for Clonan County. I have been a felony prosecutor for Clonan County for almost two years. I have about seven years of prosecution experience overall prosecuting misdemeanors, juvenile crimes, and felony crimes. I handle crimes from simple drug possession all the way up to serious violent felonies. But I can tell you that most of the cases I deal with have some sort of drug component, not just drug possession cases or drug dealing cases, but most of the property crimes I deal with as well, thefts, residential burglaries, those sorts of crimes, have a drug component attached to them. So I think that it's very important that we are discussing this, because this is an issue that touches a lot of people who don't come into regular contact with drugs, or who have family members that come into regular contact with drugs. But this is something that touches most members of the community.
Good evening. My name is Angie Gooding, and I'm a teacher here in town and the founder of Port Angeles Citizen Action Network, also known as PA-CAN. When I moved back to my hometown three years ago, it was really obvious to me how drug-impacted our students are. And so I formed PA-CAN in order to address that issue specifically. So in the last two years, what we've done is we've gotten interventionists into our schools, both at the middle school and at the high school. We have brought forth the idea of CLEAN, which perhaps Chief Smith will be talking about a little bit. And we are currently working on getting a health clinic up at the high school so that kids have access to health care. So this is very much a citizen action group, and we're always looking for help. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Ken Dubuque. I'm the fire chief here in Port Angeles, and our role is probably pretty obvious. We tend to be sort of the social safety net for the community, and folks have gotten to the point where there's nowhere else to turn, there's nothing else they can do. Quite frequently, 911 is their answer, and we're always there to answer that call. So that's our primary job, and what we're hoping to do is, in the future, is to try to branch into more of a preventative role so that we can get out and hopefully partner with initiative behavioral health and some of the other medical facilities, get out in the community and meet folks prior to the time when they get to the most desperate point where they actually have to dial 911. So that's our role in the community.
Good evening. My name is Corey Delacott. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director for the City of Port Angeles, and I manage all of our public places, facilities, parks, and things of that nature. I've been with the Parks and Recreation Department for 26 years now, and over the last five years, we've seen an increase of needles and homeless camps in our public spaces. So we work closely with our staff and the police department to work on those type of issues to make sure our facilities are safe. We also have the privilege of working with many volunteers who spend countless hours of working in our parks and facilities to help to get cleaned up as well. So thank you.
All right, Tom, we'll go down here.
Sergeant Tom Cook with the Port Angeles Police Department, currently assigned to OGNET. I've been a police officer for 20 years, five days ago. Working with OGNET, myself and Sergeant John Keegan from the Clonan County Sheriff's Department supervise a team of eight detectives, and our main focus is focusing on mid-to-upper level drug dealers and the crimes that surround drugs. Once in a while, we'll help with a big homicide, I can do the other day, but primarily drugs, and like I said, need to upload level drug dealers. I want to let you know upfront that I take this very seriously, not only because it's my chosen profession, but because I lost one of my best friends in 2015 to a drug overdose. And so this subject is very near and dear to me, and myself and my team are doing everything we can to help out.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Jones. I am a psychiatrist, and I'm also the chief physician officer for Olympic Medical Center. Olympic Medical Center's branches, including the hospital and all of our outpatient clinics, as well as home health, brush up against the opioid problem every single day, almost every single minute of every single day. As well as our efforts to start a coordinated and combined behavioral health and MAT program, which is Medication-Assisted Treatment Program, in our primary care clinics that we're going to be starting very shortly. Throughout the organization, we're taking a hard look at the numbers and amounts of opiates that are prescribed in primary care in our specialty clinics and in the emergency ward, and we've made great efforts to ensure that the lowest appropriate dose, if a narcotic medication is warranted at all, is prescribed, the fewest number of pills are given, so that A, there's not as many drugs out on the street, and B, we're limiting the number of people who are exposed to opiates, because once those opiates take hold in a person's brain, sometimes it takes just a few doses, just a few more than necessary to treat the pain, to get somebody hooked down the spiral of an opioid use disorder.
My name is Kate Weller. I'm a family physician. I've been in town since 2001, originally part of Family Medicine Port Angeles, a private clinic, and in 2015, we transitioned to what's called a federally qualified health center, otherwise known as a community clinic. Our mission is to serve the needs of the community, and obviously, this is a huge need of the community. We started off internally. We created a chronic pain advisory board, similar to what Dr. Jones was talking about, taking a look at how we're prescribing opioids responsibly, decreasing the amount of folks that are getting addicted to opioids in the first place. We created a MAT team, Medication-Assisted Treatment, which is primarily using Suboxone, a medication to help people get off opioids, get out of the opioid addiction cycle. And then we kind of moved to our external approaches, working with our community partners, many of the people in this room. And Wendy Sisk said, there's an ongoing coordinated community response, opioid response project that really has three components, as Dr. Jones mentioned, decreasing the, improving prescribing practices for opioids in the first place, increasing access to treatment for opioid use disorder, and preventing opioid overdoses. And we are involved in all three of those programs. We also are involved working with the fire department, helping divert people out of the emergency room and into treatment, and working with the police department, trying to divert people out of the jail and get them into treatment. And we're working with PA-CAN to get a clinic up at the high school to help kids get into treatment when they need it. We have five suboxone providers right now. I just hired four new providers that will be coming in over the next five months, that all are suboxone providers. We are currently treating 132 patients with Suboxone and expect to get that up to probably at least 300 in the next year. We applied for a grant through the St. Louis Behavioral Health Organization. They're in the audience, and we did get that grant, so we will be starting a medication-assisted treatment program, office-based, where we can better meet the needs of folks that need substance use treatment.
Hi. I'm Brian Smith. I'm the chief of police for the City of Port Angeles, and we, in the police department, have a role in this opioid addiction crisis that some of it's traditional, some of it's non-traditional, but both of them are very important. Traditional side of our job is the response to calls for service and preventing crimes from happening. And that's the 27,000 calls for service in every police area we went on last year with 32 officers. The neighborhood watch, the community outreach, our trespass program, and all these things touch opioid addiction in all kinds of ways. The less traditional stuff is some of what you've heard alluded to here, the partnerships of us working across disciplines. And we, in the police department, it's our mission to establish a working relationship with everyone that's sitting on this panel on both sides of me. And that means understand what they do, be able to be a credible partner in harm reduction, in outreach, and it's a new job for law enforcement, but it's an important one. And Angie talked about the CLEAN program. That's using the police officers as a sort of a conduit to treatment or a solution to a problem that we discover first. You know, our visibility in the community, our capacity to be out there and helping people, we discover people that need help, well, they need help from someone sitting up on the panel other than us. And that's us working with social workers, us working with medical providers, and it's didn't start here in Port Angeles, but the idea didn't come from the police department. It came from our partners, from people bringing these concepts to us. The harm reduction idea, the simple part of it, us police officers carrying the lock sum, which is a reversal drug for opioids. We started that in May of 2015. We had help from the Port Angeles Fire Department. We had help from Dr. Tordini and Julia Keegan on my left, and we had an enthusiastic acceptance by the police officers, and we've had a credible number of reversals on opioid addiction or overdoses, and we're very pleased, and that program's embedded into what we do. The other things, the outreach, from our idea about us being able to build a bridge to the social work community, came Deputy Chief Vieda and Viola Ware's street partnership. They call it the Housing Beat. It's just the same idea, is reaching out to marginalized people and making them aware of services and also connecting with them in a place that they wouldn't normally see us, so we can possibly get them into treatment, housing, detox, counseling, and that's also a continuing partnership that's, I think, brought other attention to our ability to do things. Somebody who's sitting in the audience here, Amy Miller, brought me an article about the police social worker concept. Well, that's actually not that complicated, but the idea is that we aren't the social workers. We're simply the bridge to all the people here, to the social work and the health community. But I think it's a future role for law enforcement, and it fits in our community caretaking role. So we're very excited to be part of this. And the last thing that I don't want to leave out, we still have a role in criminal interdiction. In other words, the police department, we think about what the drug task force does every day in terms of information, in terms of search warrant service, in terms of making criminal case. The social work part of our job, which is emerging, doesn't take away from our enforcement or our police side of our job, and we don't apologize for that, and we think you expect us to enforce the criminal laws of the state of Washington and the state of the U.S. And that's, interdiction is still a part of our job, because there's crime associated with what Tom's talking about. Those are criminal enterprises, those are criminal businesses, they victimize people every day, and it's our objective to take illegal drugs off the street, pursue those cases to the best we can. We do that in an organized way through partnerships with our federal, state, and local partners, but that's our fourth role.
Can't skip the mayor?
I don't want to disagree with him, because that's dangerous, but if this was my living room, this would be a really weird living room. So I'm Chris Frank. I'm the health officer for the county. We have one of the highest rates of opioid overdose deaths in the state. We're in the top four counties, and so for us, this is definitely a public health issue. So I am spending a lot of my time working on this. Only plenty of time. We've got a lot of things going on, and you've heard about a lot of things from different people. I'm the chair of a group of people that are organizing a three-county opioid response. It's us, Jefferson, and Kitsap County. And there are lots of things that are going on, but I don't want to leave lots of time for questions, so I think I'm just going to keep on moving.
I'm Sergeant Wendy Peterson with the Clonan County Corrections Facility, and I've been there for about 33 years now. And when my supervisor retires, the end of June, I'll be taking his place. So of course, our concern in the jail is how to help the inmates make it once they get released from the facility. And so offering them different resources to help them with housing, mental health issues, drug addiction, so on and so forth, is our goal in the jail, to stop the repeat offenders.
Art Tordini here. I am a physician and the jail medical director.
Wow, this is awesome. Look at this. This is incredible, the number of people here tonight. Just want to let you know, there's three more chairs up front. If anyone wants to come down and sit down here. I'm Julia Keegan. I'm the jail manager, jail medical manager, and also, I run the Suboxone program with two other nurses, Candace Prieston, Celestina Davidson, along with Stephanie Dilts, who's our social worker. And we're the first jail in Washington State to have a Suboxone program coming out of a jail setting. We're also the first jail on the West Coast. So it's a pretty big deal, we think, and we're very proud of it, that we're willing to stand up and do this for our patients. So there are other jails across the United States actually that are reaching out to us and asking us, how are you doing this? What are your policies and procedures? Tell us. We want to do what you're doing. So we're just very proud of our Suboxone program, and thank you guys all for coming tonight. This is incredible turnout.
So we're living room, we're not. This is your time now, for about 95 minutes or more. We simply want you to feel comfortable and not afraid to ask the questions that are of concern to you. We have some extraordinary people in front of you. I consider them some of the heroes in this community. Todd is our moderator. He has the mic. Please, don't be hesitant to use the mic. It's important. We hear your questions. The time is yours. Todd?
All right. Thanks to the panel, and I think for efficiency sake, what I'm going to do is kind of a two-fold thing here. So if some folks want to come over and maybe kind of queue themselves up to ask questions on that mic, that would be great. And then anybody, maybe in this part of the main council chamber, I can get to you with my mic, and we can start some questions there. So I guess shoot a hand up if anybody's got a first question they want to do. All right, you're right in the front, so.
Okay. My name's Nancy, and I took off of a PBN report that there's 234,750 needles given out last year, I believe, so that averages to 4,500 every Tuesday. So my question is, do you really believe that the needle exchange program is benefiting this community?
All right. Who wants to go first? All right, we'll let the county health officer go. Chris?
Can we finish the question?
Oh, yeah. The question was the effectiveness, basically, of a needle exchange program, considering the amount of needles that have been, if you did the math, basically, as to how many are being handed out. So we'll let Dr. Frank address the needle exchange.
So a needle exchange just fall under the category that Brian was speaking about, about harm reduction. It's the idea that there are some behaviors that are going to be difficult to change, not everyone's going to be perfect at, but there are some things we can do to decrease their risk of harm to themselves, but also harm to the community. And so I will tell you that, so Kitsap County gives out about three-quarters of a million syringes, so 750,000. We give out about 250,000. And ours is a one-to-one exchange, so people have to bring a dirty needle in to get a clean one. So those needles are being used. So one benefit is that we know it takes some dirty needles out of the community, out of the parks, because, well, it doesn't take all of them out, people do want to return them, because given the choice between a cleaner or dirty needle, people will choose a clean needle. So there's some part of it that's a community good in that way. And then the other part of it is really the strongest evidence for needle exchange programs is decreasing the risk of transmission of hepatitis C and HIV in the community. And it does work for that very clearly. I'll just briefly tell you the scariest story I know about not having a needle exchange, which is a town in Indiana, Austin, Indiana. Some of you may have heard about it. It's a town of about 4,000 people, a little economically depressed, they lost some manufacturing jobs, they had an opioid problem. And Indiana at the time had a ban on needle exchanges, so it was illegal to have it, and it was a criminal offense if you were carrying injection supplies. And that was actually under our current vice president, who was the governor back then. And so it makes sense, right? And say, well, if you're carrying needles, it should be a crime, so that would be one way of looking at it. Well, what happened in this community was, essentially, they went from having, like us, having very, very low rates of HIV and hepatitis C. In a one-year period, that town of 4,000 people developed 200 new cases of HIV, because not having clean needles did not stop people from using, and people were using needles until they broke. And for people who understand opioid addiction, not having clean supplies does not stop people from using, but having clean supplies does decrease the risk of spreading HIV and hepatitis C.
All right, Josh, did you, okay. The, so you're going to do your question, so I'll let you go with your question. I'm going to scoot over here, and then we'll get somebody else up, too. And if anybody else wants to queue up over there, that's great. Go ahead.
Okay. Sounds like it's on. My question-
My question, not that either one is better, but I just had a question asked to me as a city council member, and I would be interested to hear from the treatment side as well as the law enforcement side. What do you see, not only Port Angeles, but our greater Olympic Peninsula community? Is it prescription pills, or is it more of the heroin, the illegal heroin? I'm interested to hear the answer to that.
All right, anybody want to go from treatment first, perhaps? Gail, you want to go first, maybe?
Yes. It's heroin, and it's very surprising to me, because in my whole career, heroin dependence was just a very small percentage of our treatment community. But now it is the leading admission drug in our outpatient setting, and I assume that's true all over the state.
All right, the law enforcement, Brian or Tom?
So in my experience with OPNET is that methamphetamine used to be the most popular drug around. However, recently heroin's become bigger, and I believe that's because prescription opioids have been harder and harder to get, harder and harder to abuse, so people turn to heroin. Pretty soon, we're going to see a change from heroin to fentanyl, and fentanyl's a killer, more so than heroin. So we all have friends and people we talk to, keep that in mind when you're talking to them, keep your ears out for it, because we need to know about it, we need to be ready for it when it gets here, it's not far away.
All right, Brian, and then Josh?
So last thing to add, the numbers that come from public health are, for overdoses, roughly two-thirds are heroin, and then the other thirds, like I would say, diverted. But there's still a significant diversion of prescription stuff going on, and it depends on the environment you're in. We predominantly see heroin on the street, but diverted medication is an emerging law enforcement problem, and it's emerging from like the prescription database and places where when we look for information, we find there's a lot more stuff out there than we're aware of, even though we're looking for the heroin.
You know, it might be actually instructive to do like a two-minute walk from where we got, where we were with prescription drugs to why we think we're now having this explosion in heroin. And I'd like to ask Dr. Frank to do that in two minutes, I've heard him do it many, many times, and it's incredibly instructive about why we think we're where we are now.
Two minutes is tough.
I won't tie you.
But I'm ready. So opioids are these pain-killing medications, right? And they've been around for 5,000 years. So it's from the poppy plant, right? Started out in modern-day Iraq, Iran. As soon as people started using them, people could tell that there was a group of people who had made them feel very good. It was nicknamed the Plant of Joy even back then. And it spread everywhere, very, very quickly. And so people have been using and abusing these substances for 5,000 years. So we're hardwired to like how these things make us feel. They work for pain killing, but they also can cause addiction, so they're a double-edged sword, right? I, for one, and I think everyone up here, would never want to go back to a pre-opioid day. Like if you talked to people through their diaries or journals about what it was like to have, you know, a serious battle wound in civil war, or something like that, none of us would want that kind of misery. But there's a downside, too. And so one of the big things that's happened is pharmaceutical companies have pushed lots and lots of opioid medications from the very beginning. Merck, Purdue, all of these places, they put these things into household products way back in the early 1900s. And as we got into the 1990s, the real famous one is Oxycontin, probably everybody in this room has heard of that. And it was pushed all over, and the rate of opioid prescribing went up fourfold. So doctors were told that they were under-treating pain, and that pain was a vital sign, that it was cruel to not treat people's pain with the medications that were available. And they were actually threatened with medical liability or malpractice for not treating people's pain, and the amount of these pain prescriptions just went through the roof. And unfortunately, the other side of the sword kind of reared its head, and at the same time, the rate of opioid addiction went up in that same way, along with opioid overdoses. So it's been a long, long saga, and there have been ebbs and flows throughout history, and we're in one of the upswings now. But we know that this big jump in opioid prescribing definitely drove a lot of this epidemic, and, you know, and will probably also need to be an important part of the solution. I just wanted to comment on the law enforcement, that, you know, while we see mostly heroin now, and as we're seeing in the treatment facilities, a lot of heroin people, we know that 80% of the people who are using heroin started using prescription medications. Doesn't mean it was necessarily prescribed to them. Could be from a friend, could be from a medicine cabinet, could be stolen, could be bought or purchased, but 80% of them, so we know that prescription drugs are a huge part of the problem.
All right. Next, go ahead.
My name is Chad Weston, hey, I'm the Port Angeles Chapter Chair of Oxford Clean and Silver House. A lot of the questions, officer, was one of, what do we do with these people when they're released or when they get home from treatment? Okay, it's been brought to my attention in the last three months that our houses, the hall five, a total of 47 beds, are completely full with recovering addicts with up to four to six months clean time, with a success rate of 8%. Now, sort of how is the drug court, the lit court program, and DOC, it's a part of a requirement to check in with us? So what I'm asking is, is the City of Port Angeles willing to commit ever to Oxford or to help us fund these houses where we can learn these new things, to be productive members of society?
I mean, before we answer that, can you explain for folks here what Oxford House is? Many people may not know.
Oxford House is clean and sober living for the person who's lost the skills to be a productive member of society. You have responsibilities, you have chores, you have EES, which is equal, or equal shared expenses. It's not just giving a clean UA these days, it's living a life of sobriety, learning how to get patients, learning how to get a job. Myself, I entered the program because tomorrow I get my son back. You don't have a good, you know, yeah, for sure, that's a no, but tomorrow or the next day, we might have confirmation of a sixth house opening. The problem is, is when we accept somebody into our home, and we have to look at them right in the face and say, "I'm sorry, we don't have room for you, but you are accepted," you know, that's a potential relapse, that's a potential death, that's a potential statistic factor in jails. And since I've been in Chapter Chair and I've been in Oxford for the last six months, I think there's maybe been one relapse out of 47 people. It's probably true.
Right. So to the question, I'm not sure, maybe the mayor can, that's a policy issue, really?
Well, let me answer it just quickly, and then we defer to Nathan, because he's here in this room. It's quite clear, and this is my own perspective, and I believe I cannot speak for other members of the council, but this is, in order to deal effectively with this issue, I have said this before, we need to humanize this issue. I have seen clear evidence, I've heard this gentleman speak before, I'm extremely impressed with the effectiveness, the programmatic compassion nature of the Oxford House program. Nathan West has said the City of Port Angeles has within its comprehensive plan, certainly would say that the city has every desire and every hope that we could find additional Oxford House opportunities. Nathan, would you care to take a moment to say how we can, as a city, through policy and comprehensive plan, to have some help in providing additional Oxford-type housing? Because it obviously makes a huge difference for these individuals, find a safe, supportive home environment.
So I'd like to share first that I think housing supply in the community is a very significant issue to all segments and demographics of our population. I think very much we want to increase the housing supply available in Port Angeles for a lot of different reasons, not just for potential Oxford House, but also for workforce. And I think that we are very much interested in becoming part of that conversation. I don't want to indicate that the city is the sole source of a solution there, but I'm more than happy to begin discussions, be part of that discussion, and connect Oxford House with resources that we do have in the community that will be more than happy to step forward. But I think it's a great thing to start that discussion and see what we can do, see what we can bring to the table to better solve that problem, so that when someone does knock on the door, we have more space available.
All right, next.
Hi, yeah, my name is Gil Luhan, and I want to first thank all of the law enforcement partners, the fire department, first responders, you guys are going to wake up by keeping us sick, and I appreciate that. One of the things that I'd really like to see is some more information put out for, I wrote down a bunch of stuff here, but one of the things I want to make sure people do, that police can't do a good job without you. If you see something, report it. In this new age of telephones and smartphones and all that stuff, if you see something, report it. You see a car out of place, or you see cars driving in unison, report it. Get the license numbers, turn them into the police. It's up to you, as a community, to do this, to keep everyone safe. And I'd like to see that the newspaper puts in a special place every week, at least once a week, to show that they can, are a part of this organization, are a part of this partnership, that allows people to see, you know, gives them the incentive to report suspicious activity. And this is what we got to do. And I thank you guys for doing that.
All right, perhaps I can frame that a little bit into a question, maybe Brian, you want to talk about community policing and just the importance of, you know, eyes in the community?
Okay, sure. So if I think I understand the comment, maybe it's about people participating in our partnership with the Sheriff's Department, our Neighborhood Watch program, we've been doing it in earnest for about eight years, where we go out to your neighborhood, wherever you want to meet, whoever you want us to meet with, and we provide all sorts of information. And we're also, we provide access to us about answering questions. Some of the Neighborhood Watch meetings are sort of mini town hall meetings, and we have prosecutor, we have law enforcement, we have other, sometimes we have co-compliance there. But the, there isn't simple solutions. Giving us information unfortunately isn't without a pathway for us to do something with that information. We bring OPNET to some of those meetings, because you can give them information directly. And, but the bottom line is, regardless of the problem, if you call the police, we create a call for service, it creates a record of the call for service, it goes up on our Crime Map, which is on our website, it's on Squim PD's website, and a lot of times trying to get eyes on a particular problem, it's very helpful when you type on our website, Crime Map, and you see, it lights up in your area of suspicious activity, drug activity, theft, whatever, would indicate a problem. Or in some cases where I'm sitting at, say, my desk with someone who is very unhappy with police response, and I bring up the map, and there's nothing, nothing lights up. So while people think they've told us, they've called us, we have no records of calls for service, we're actually running blind. So whether it's needles in a public area, or short-stay activity, which might be drugs, often it is, or anything else, accessing us, creating a call for service, and having an officer respond or talking to officers is actually particularly important in us, you know, seeing where the problems are.
Tom, go ahead.
Thank you for that comment on encouraging people to call in and report what they see. Just the other day, on behalf of the City of Port Angeles Police Department, I posted on our Facebook page how valuable it is to have people call us and give us tips. Those tips don't always have to go to dispatch, they can come to OPNET, and that number would be, get ready to write this down, 565-7332. And what you can do is you can call in, and you'll have options. You can leave a message for a detective, or you can just leave a tip, just a quick, fast tip, like, "I saw suspicious activity, it was a blue Ford Bronco, a license plate, yada, yada, yada." And that little bit of information may seem insignificant to you at that time, and if that one little bit of information by itself comes across as insignificant to us, but if we get another person telling us about this car, and another person telling us about this car, and another person telling us about this car, one little piece of insignificant information with another piece, with another piece, with another piece, with another piece, that's the ground floor of good case against a drug dealer. That's how we get the ball rolling. So please, I encourage you to share your information, share your tips with us, share your knowledge of what you see going on in your neighborhoods.
All right, go ahead.
I'm Oxford Smith, Port Angeles Police Department. My question is for the doctors on the board. Along with the Suboxone Program that we currently have, is Port Angeles actively prescribing things like Vivitrol after detox?
Who wants to, can I? Okay, okay.
There are different ways we can help folks get off opioids, get out of the addiction cycle, I should say. And Vivitrol is an injectable antagonist, so basically it blocks you from getting the high from your narcotic or your opioid. It is a fairly new option, and there are definitely groups that are looking into how do we do that, as Dr. Frank was talking about sharing this three-county opioid response team. We are looking at having different options in town where we can do more Vivitrol, and then also how do we support the providers out of the community that are prescribing Suboxone and can start prescribing more Vivitrol. There's also, methadone is a different option for people, it is a narcotic as well, but it doesn't give you the up and the down, it keeps you here so that you can actually, you're not in withdrawal or high, and you can actually start getting your life back in order. So there are a variety of options, and yes, people are looking into them.
So I think one of the things to piggyback off what Dr. Wellish said is that there are now more medication treatments for opioid use disorders, methadone, as Dr. Wellish said, Suboxone, which people have heard about. These are both medications that people take on a daily basis that are, especially opioid replacements in a controlled environment, that is, not necessarily that you're, you know, in a treatment facility, but you're being monitored by a medical professional. There's the long-acting Vivitrol. There's actually also short-acting, now Trexone, that you can take by pill. But none of these in and of themselves are cures, and none of them in and of themselves are effective treatments without treating the rest of the person, the rest of the behaviors, the habits, the potentially underlying psychiatric disorders that also help or influence a person into the addiction cycle and the drug-seeking behavior. So it's not that, you know, the medical profession in itself is going to solve this problem, we're not. We're going to help, we're going to help treat it with the assistance and with the partnership, you know, health, with chemical dependency, with everybody, really. I mean, as I look around the room here, you know, Olympic Medical Center has partnerships, and I personally have partnerships with most of the people in this room. So when we talk about the things that our individual organizations are doing, none of this is going to be successful in a vacuum, and none of it is really happening in a vacuum. The successful treatment for opioid use disorder is multifaceted, it is frequently, it is sometimes frequently interrupted by relapses and recovery, so it is a lengthy process.
I'm going to interject to kind of another question, just to back up a little bit, and maybe our turn, Eddie, you can answer this. We had a discussion on the radio a couple weeks ago about the Suboxone Program in the jail. Can you explain to folks who may not be aware of how that works? And there's some limitations on this as well.
Yeah, we started the Suboxone Program about 16 months ago or so, and as Julia mentioned, we were the first jail in the state, probably on the West Coast, to do it. And Suboxone basically is replacing methadone as a medication-assisted treatment option. It's safer and can be administered. It's safer and can be administered through a physician's office, or in our case, to jail. It, it doesn't really make you high, but it prevents the withdrawal and the cravings. And it's a, just a tool, basically, to help get some people off the opioid addiction, you know, cycle. That has to be paired with other activity, like Dr. Jones said, you know, psychiatric treatment, counseling, something like that. But our biggest stumbling block here in Port Angeles since we started the program is the overwhelming number of people who are interested, are inmates, who want to be on it, but we have a very limited number of people who are licensed to prescribe it in the community. Currently, I obviously have a license, but the only other people that are providers are the North Olympic Healthcare Network and Jamestown Traditional Clinic. And so we're limited, I mean, we could flood them both. So we have to be very picky about who we select. We try and pick the best candidates to start them, and people agree, sure, we're going to follow up and follow through. There are a lot more people out there we could trade, but we need more providers. That's where we're at now.
Michael, you wanted to add something too?
I just wanted to speak to the multifaceted aspect of trading addiction. I started working in law enforcement with community corrections when I was about 20 years old in 1994. And the one thing that I learned very quickly was that people who struggled with long-term addiction suffered deep, deep trauma very early on in their lives. And that was probably about 99% of the women that I spoke to, whose stories that I listened to. And we do see that a lot when we're dealing with housing, when people come in, sometimes we're the last resort, and they come in, and I'll stand on my ledge just so somebody can sit in and make phone calls and try to get into treatment, because they have nowhere else to go. And I think it's really important that we understand that a lot of folks have been victims very early on in their lives.
Wendy, did you want to?
I wanted to share that as we're working on looking at the spectrum of treatment for our community, and again, across the three-county region, one of the things we know is we have an incredibly competent set of treatment providers here in our community, Reflections, Cedar Grove, Olympic Personal Grove, and I'm just saying, anyone, Dale?
Oh, God.
And Clough Counseling. So, you know, we have a really great set of traditional treatment providers. And two years ago, we had been talking about medication-assisted treatment, you know, the providers that had skill level in that, I think, would have been really limited, but as this problem has continued to escalate, our local treatment providers continue to expand their competency in providing creative intervention. On a larger scale, the Salem VHO has also been looking at trying to fund opioid substitution treatment programs to provide that comprehensive care that is really necessary to be successful, particularly in the early stages of medication-assisted treatment, both here in Clough County and also in Breverton. So as, as time goes on, we can expect to see the types of services that our community members can access will continue to expand. Those programs are challenging to set up. I anticipate that, you know, when, when a provider is chosen for that, that it will be a several-month, at best, run-up to be able to have a full-spectrum program available in our community that really is focusing on providing all of your medication-assisted treatment options, Suboxone, Vivitrol, methadone, with all of the needed supports in place. It's coming, it's not coming fast, new treatment will develop over time, but, you know, in order to be successful, we'll, we'll need to continue to have good community support amongst us in the treatment world, and also amongst our community members.
Yeah, Angie?
I'd like to speak a little bit about the, the trauma that many of our students are facing today, and speak also to the importance of prevention. There's something that many of you probably have heard of, but it's called ACES, it's Adverse Childhood Experiences, and many of our students are traumatized by some sort of event in their lives. We, we now have students that are entering our school system who were born addicted, you know, and they're being raised by people that have been either addicted or are currently addicted. They are suffering from neglect, emotional abuse, and we are doing our best to educate them. So any, anything that we can do as a community to support our youth is going to be very important to curtailing this issue.
All right, hang on, I think, you've been waiting a long time, so I'm going to let you get in, and then I'll, I'll come and get Matt in just a minute. Go ahead.
Fairly, Smith. I just read an article in, I think, the New England Journal of Medicine, that there's a tiny crisis regarding naloxone, is that how you pronounce it? And mostly the price is going up. While a lot of, of the drug was given away for free, it's going from $609 to $4,500 for two doses. This is certainly concerning across the country, and I know that one of the responses to this has been a lawsuit initiated by four counties in New York State, and one county in Washington to sue the manufacturers of fentanyl, which is Janssen Pharmaceuticals, as well as other makers, as well as the makers of naloxone, to try and keep this down and to not ravage our communities. My question is, how are we going to afford a new prescription?
All right. All right, you're getting a lot of them.
So, so pharmaceutical companies are, they are definitely a bit of the evil part of this story. I don't know if anybody from pharmaceutical companies are here, but I don't hear they're evil. That being said, they provide some really, really important medications, right? So it's, again, a double-edged sword. The price of naloxone, which is the reversal medication, has gone up as the demand has gone up, right? It's just normal economics, all, you know, there's opioid overdose crisis across the country, and while we sometimes feel like Clough County is particularly bad, and in Washington it is, but graded on a curve, we're nothing like West Virginia, Kentucky, Southern Ohio. I mean, they have rates that are dramatically worse than ours. And so those places are sucking up a lot of the supply of naloxone, which drives the price up. That being said, I think there is enough political will around this issue and enough bipartisan support throughout the country, that there will be really significant pressure on these pharmaceutical companies to hold the present check. Now, I don't want to be too Pollyanna-ish, I mean, they are big companies with powerful lobbies. That being said, there are ways to publicly shame these companies, and I think it probably actually will work around naloxone in ways that it hasn't worked around EpiPens or other things. Generic medication, other suppliers can pop into the market, and we've already seen some alternative forms of naloxone. It used to be just the auto-injector that you're mentioning, the really expensive one, but now most of us use a nasal version that's much, much cheaper, and it is.
It's going to cost you money.
It is, but it's about $70, we pay about $70 for two doses. And I know that that journal article is, I've read the article, but, but they are deals that the state works out to get it at decreased cost, and we still get a lot of ours from University of Washington Alcohol and Drug Abuse Institute. So we're hoping there will continue to be ways of getting this medication that don't bankrupt us, and hopefully hold the pharmaceutical companies in check.
What about entering into the class-action lawsuit?
So there are costs associated with class-action lawsuits, and it has to be worth it. And in a county like ours, that, that does not probably make a lot of sense. There are other places, the state of Washington will almost certainly enter lawsuits against some pharmaceutical manufacturers, like they already have against Purdue. We might see more local places like Everett, who has jumped in and is suing Purdue itself, but really, these are ripe for multi-state class-action lawsuits to recoup treatment costs and all of the other associated costs around this. And so I think it's one of those ones where the bigger you are, the better chance you have against these big manufacturers. And so I think as much as we can encourage our states to join together to go after these big, big fish is probably the most effective way.
So the answer is to go to the state, we should go together and lobby the state?
The answer is, right now, it's not a problem, and there's, that's not, that's not one of the major barriers we have.
All right, we got to move along, because I got a lot of folks who want to get a question, so Matt?
This is just going to be a simple question. Dr. Art, I can't read your last name from here because mine's a bad, but you said in the jails, you're trying to pick out the, the good candidates. Can you clarify what makes somebody a good candidate for your program?
Yeah, there's, we picked up a model that was first tried in Boston, and was successful there, and, and they shared the information, and they showed that certain people have a much higher incidence of relapse, and other people will have a higher success rate, based on a whole bunch of parameters. And there's a detailed questionnaire that we go through with each inmate that's asked us to start the program, and actually, our mental health worker does that. So they express an interest, we get them into our social services gal, and she goes through all of these different things, and then it's scored, and then they come and see me at the jail clinic, they see Julia, and then we get together and we make a decision. And at the current time, because of our lack of providers, we're limited to how many people we can start. So we try and pick the people that have the highest likelihood of success, obviously. As we get more providers, we can liberalize it a little more, and hopefully help more people, right? But at this time, that's, that's our rate-limiting step. I can find more candidates than I can find physicians to see them. Now recently, the federal government has allowed Suboxone to be provided by mid-levels, nurse practitioners, and physician assistants, and that only started in 2017, so it was limited to physician only. Having a Suboxone clinic, a bunch of Suboxone patients, is very time-consuming. So they really have to be nurse-run for the most part, because there's a lot of time and effort involved with each patient, you know, doing drug screens, interviewing the patient, what's been going on, making sure they're going to their counseling, which is part of their therapy. There's not really all that much time that's physician-required. So the successful programs are all nurse-managed, and that was the grant that Dr. Wellish was trying to describe. So, so they will have funding shortly, we hope, actual funds, will they improve, or you got it, you got the money? So they're trying to hire to run a nurse-managed program at North Olympic Healthcare Network. So that's going to open up a bunch of spots.
So Kate, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of confirm that. I mean, we, we actually had a medical student who started a project, we called it Fast-Tracking Out of the Jail, so, you know, Dr. Tordini would start them on Suboxone, and then we would transition them into our clinic. And we ended up, we just couldn't keep up, our, our providers, I would, I would use the word drowning, you know, we had five Suboxone providers, and we have 20-minute appointments, and it takes 40 to 60 minutes to do these appointments, and we're squeezing them in. I just started doing Suboxone in October, I'm already up to 15 patients. I end up seeing, you know, two or three sometimes in the day, and it, it throws my entire day off, and many of you are my patients, and you know that you end up waiting an hour then to see me. So this nurse, this nurse care manager model is well-documented, it's, it's sort of a cookbook approach, they've done it before, they tell you how to do it, and it allows us to expand that access. As Dr. Tordini said, a nurse care manager can manage a much higher volume of patients, and then the providers can be more of a supervisory role, and, and we can manage to see many more patients, and I'm very excited to be able to open that back up to the jail so that they don't have to just pick the best candidates out there that we can start, everybody we possibly can, and transition them.
All right, thanks.
Okay, so this is our living room, right? I've got some stuff to say, there's not been a voice up here for the neighbors and the friends and the communities that we live in, and some of us got problems with, this is your guys' specialty, what we're talking about, what you guys are saying. Us as, as community, the neighbors, people that are sitting right next to us, we find needles in the street, we find needles in the park, we find needles behind Safeway. It was half a week ago, me and my wife were walking our dog out by the road school. We, we come up to these two black cars, and there's two guys in the front seat shooting at them. I took a picture of them, told them, "What are you, what are you doing?" They took off, I called the sheriff. Sheriff called me back and said, "I'm on my way." I said, "They took off, but they'll probably be parking lot." And sure enough, me and my wife drove up to Safeway parking lot, they were there. I called the sheriff back, told them, "Hey, those guys are sitting in the car right here, this is the kind of car they're driving, you pull right up." The guys didn't go to jail. So what are your guys' limits as, as a?
Possession by consumption? What happened to possession by consumption?
Yeah, that was possession.
So the question really then is, law enforcement, yeah, what, what can they do?
Or is it not a big enough reason to go to jail? You don't even smack their hands anymore. My God. And we, me and my wife were witnesses to the crime, went to court, and nothing happened. So as this gentleman, as this gentleman was saying about, we should be doing, you know, saying tips, telling you guys about this stuff, nothing happened. What did we do?
All right, Tom?
So, that's tough, that's a tough one. If I was a responding officer to that call, and I had you there as a witness to what you saw, and you're willing to be a witness and testify if it went to court, I would then obviously make contact with those guys and see what kind of probable cause I could develop myself. Typically, though, they see a uniform walking up on them, they're going to hide everything, and I'm not going to be able to see from the outside of the car what's going on inside the car. And so, and so I would rely on your testimony to petition a judge for a warrant for that car.
I took pictures of a whole bag of syringes sitting on the floor, and they were shooting at me at a school, in a school parking lot.
I understand that.
That's just not the crime in itself.
Okay. I, I understand your frustration, I'm frustrated with the whole situation too. And what I'm telling you is how I would have handled it had I been a responding officer. I can't, I can't talk for the deputy that responded to that call. It's a tough thing, developing probable cause and getting search warrants, it's not often as easy as, as it seems. You mentioned possession. I did that one time in my whole career, and what happened was, I ended up arresting a lady for a different crime, and I found a cellophane wrapper, and that was her, her drug wrapper, and interviewed her, and developed probable cause to get a search warrant for her blood. And then she was charged with possession of methamphetamine because it was in her blood when it came back positive. That took hours and hours and hours for a simple possession charge. And so what I'm trying to say is, that is a lot of work for one officer when there's calls coming in all the time for that officer to respond to, and in a way, they have to triage the most needy calls, for lack of a better term. I don't know quite how else to explain that, and I'm not defending our position, I'm just trying to explain it to you. There's, there's one call here, and there's 15 or 16 calls around the city at the same time, and sometimes we have four or five officers working on the city. And so it's just hard, it's a hard thing to tackle. And, and we are just as frustrated as you guys, trust me.
So being that you can't, all of us can have to be in possession of a needle in our pocket right now, nothing can happen to us?
If, if the needle was empty, if the needle was empty, let's, let's say.
Because it's paraphernalia, I'm always interested in test hook or?
Right, if, well, if it's an unused needle, that's not drug paraphernalia. If it's a used needle, it's considered drug paraphernalia, and that is against the law. However, in order to take that forward in court and get a prosecution, you need to be able to prove that the person used that drug paraphernalia to introduce drugs into their body, and you get that with an interview. How many people are going to admit, "Yeah, I used that needle to put drugs into my body"? Not very many.
Except the people at the needle exchange that gets them for free.
Right.
So those needles get turned in, one for one. Where are all these needles coming from, they're in our community? Do you guys have an idea where they're coming from, or where the people can get them? Is it RIAV, is it Walgreens?
Well, it would be at a needle exchange, wherever that is.
Well, no, what I'm saying is they do one for one, so all these ones we find in our yards and behind the stores and everything, where are those coming from?
People that don't want to recycle their needles.
You guys have an idea where they, these drug addicts are allowed to get them?
Well, I think you can buy needles for like, regular medical use, I mean, they're not just for illegal use, people use needles for legitimate reasons too.
So if people can buy them, they don't have to go to the needle exchange, they can purchase them. So why can't, why do we have a needle exchange?
Well, I think the doctor explained it at the beginning of the talk, is that the, the overall concern for people's health and, and society, he, he talked about that small town where HIV and AIDS went up because people were sharing needles all the time rather than getting clean ones. So in the interest of public health, they offered a needle exchange.
All right.
Let me help Tom a little bit, maybe I can answer the question a little bit differently. The reason that we bring one of the prosecutors to our neighborhood watch meetings, because we, it's really a fair question you're asking. We called you guys and you didn't do anything. We get asked that question every time we do a meeting, because the expectation, let's say you come, like, I come from California. California is on the U.S. constitutional standard by a voter initiative, and I didn't know that when I lived there, but that's how it works. They follow the U.S. constitutional standard for search and seizure. Washington is a unique state in that its constitution has a higher amount of protection for your liberty. It affects us in search and seizure in ways that, like, people expect us to be able to walk up and do consent searches. You can ask your prosecutor up here how those go. We have to tread very carefully to be successful in a case in environments that we wouldn't in other constitutional environments. So, like, asking people to empty their pockets and being able to approach and talk our way into a car for a search is a really weak doctrine here in Washington to get a search. A strong way is a search warrant. PAPD officers like Officer Smith, who was up at the microphone, was a young, brand-new officer, just search warrants all the time from the front seat of her car. That's actually a particular skill that we do here in Clallum County that you don't see elsewhere, but we have to have facts that give us enough to get a search warrant from a judge to get into that vehicle. The first question an officer asks, and this is what I was, this is kind of a long, I can't give you the long answer here without my time. When an officer approaches the call for service, the first question they ask is, "Do I have a crime?" And then if they, the answer is yes, how do I prove the crime? And they do this, like, 27,000 calls for service for us in a year. So the hardest case to prove is when you walk up to the car or you didn't see anything. But sometimes, like, there's a driving-on-the-influence case that you can make. Somebody behaves in a way that now I have a crime. And now I can get the driver out and I can conduct an investigation. But the viewing the needle or the behavior that indicates, that's the hardest case for us to make on the fly. And it's the one you expect us, and we know that, you expect us to do something, you just saw it. I can give you examples, though, where we've made arrests, we've been successful in prosecution when the call was someone sitting in a car injecting with a needle. We've been successful. But the planets have to line up. And like, in the case I'm thinking of, it was at Wright-Hay here in town a couple years ago. It was a rainy day. Two officers walked up and they watched it, they saw the behavior. They got the search warrant, they got the heroin, it put two people in jail. It took them half the day, but that, it isn't an issue. The time that we spend is an issue. Once we get a case, we work it. But in the situation describing where it's mobile and you see it, then it moves, and the deputy gets, like, they're at a disadvantage time-wise, often we won't be able to meet your expectations, unfortunately. But what I would say is, anytime you want to do a ride-along with us, and I really recommend that, it really gets to answering the questions about how we have to operate in the legal constraints under.
We're gonna let our prosecutor over here talk a bit about some of the legal ramifications and maybe talk about Washington's unique spot in the world.
It is unique. It is a daily battle. It's a conversation I have probably on a weekly basis with officers regarding when they can and cannot search and the level of search that they can do at certain times. I will say, I want to address two specific things. One is, what happened to possession by consumption? Our courts got rid of it. We don't have it in Washington State. If it is in your blood, it's gone for the purposes of being a crime. I can't speak to Officer Cook's one case from a long time ago, but it is no longer, that is not a prosecutable crime for us. When it comes to use of drug paraphernalia, possession of drug paraphernalia in and of itself is not a crime. It has to be use of drug paraphernalia. So just having a needle, for example, that you were planning on in the future putting drugs in, is not a crime. You have to use it. And then the only way we can prosecute it in Clallum County is proving that you used it in Clallum County. So in that circumstance, that would be where an interview would come in. And that is also a crime that is punishable by a maximum of 90 days in jail. So it's gonna be a simple misdemeanor, usually a slap on the wrist, maybe a fine, maybe a little bit of community service, and that's that. But I do want to say that I understand your frustration. I'm sorry that that specific interaction went the way it did. But I can tell you that there are a number of cases that I get where we would not have a case without a citizen informant. It is extremely important that if you see something, say something. There was a wave last month where I got, and I don't want to go into too much detail because these are active cases, but I got three separate cases involving people behind the wheel of a running car with heroin, okay? One of them had, the person had a syringe in one hand and a spoon in the other, in a running car. Those are three DUIs that didn't happen. Those are three people who would have been on the road with us, right, high on heroin, who ended up getting arrested and charged with felonies because a citizen informant saw something and called the police and the police showed up. And now those people are being prosecuted. So I don't want you to get discouraged because sometimes an interaction with the police doesn't go the way you want it to. It seems like some people get off. I understand that. But you can make a difference if you actually do call the police.
Okay, I'm gonna go over here and then I'll get down here and get these guys, so go ahead.
I'm Kathleen Farrell. I'm an osteopathic physician in the community and I've been here since 2009. I'm a family practice. And I've also done a lot of addiction work. Before I was a physician, I was a social worker. And I saw things in it from a different perspective as a social worker, which has influenced my practice. One thing I'm really impressed with is the familial onus in drug addiction, where when I go and ask about opioid dependence and how people got addicted, a lot of them do say they were started on medical drugs, drugs that were prescribed by doctors. Some of them took them from their parents' medicine cabinet. Some of them got them from the hospice that their grandparents were in. But opioids tend to run in families. I grew up in a family where my father had chronic pain, he had an autoimmune disease. He refused to go on opioids. And he talked about it regularly with us, because the doctors would keep offering opioids to him. I grew up and I got his disease, but I had his example to go by. Other people don't have his example, they have other examples. So I think we have to be responsible for the examples that we put out. If you're on prescription opioids, really consider coming off of them to give an example to the next generation. And my dad did die of a blood cancer. He never needed opioids for his blood cancer. Not all cancers need opioids. The last day he did die, he had a heart attack and the doctor ordered morphine. The runner for the hospital ran off with the morphine. It took all day for us to get some morphine to my father. Once he did get the morphine, he was able to die peacefully. But that's the only dose of opioids I know that he ever got and asked for.
All right, so down here, okay, Sharon?
So we're hearing about the effects, the devastating effects of heroin here in our community. Can you tell me, Mr. Cook, Sergeant Cook, that how, where heroin comes from, how it's transported, ported, and how it gets distributed into, in our community?
There's lots of different routes for it to get here. It starts in the Middle East, Afghanistan, Iran, with the poppy flowers. And it's manufactured. How exactly it gets here, you could say planes, trains, and automobile. Mostly, though, it comes up from the south. So even though it's born in another country across the world, somehow it gets its way to Mexico and comes across the border from down there. That's where most of our drugs come from. Most of our illegal drugs are introduced to America by the Mexican cartels. And in our area, that would be the Sinaloa cartel. We've recently worked a case that's tied in with the Sinaloa cartel. And the DA got on board. Hopefully, they're working the part outside our county, outside our state, to the southern border. But that's where most of it comes from. There are some, you might want to call them party drugs, like ecstasy, that is coming from the north. And why that would come from the north and the rest from the south, I don't know. That's just how they're manufactured or where they come from. A lot of drugs, the new thing is synthetic drugs, like phenol and derivatives of that type of drug, are being manufactured in China in labs there, big mega labs. And what people are doing is they're going there with the chemical formula and giving it to the chemist at that lab. And they produce what they're asked to produce for a certain amount of money. Oftentimes, they don't even know what they're producing. They just follow the cookbook, so to speak, of how to make these drugs. Like spice, for instance, it's a synthetic drug that affects people in a horrible way sometimes. That's produced over in China. And when we figure out the chemicals that are in that, make it against the law, they just tell China, "Change this compound," and then it's not anymore. A lot of spice you can get over the counter here and there, because we don't have laws that address all of those chemicals. So I guess that's a long-winded answer to how are they getting here? If you can think of a way that people travel, that's how it's getting here.
Chris?
I just wanted to add one more bit on controlling supply. Because I said earlier that obviously a big part of this was initially driven by opioid prescribing and prescription medications, and that continues to be true. But I think, as Tom said, it's gonna be increasingly difficult to control supply as the synthetic forms of opioids are easier and easier to make and can be made in stronger and stronger formulations where a very small amount can be cut into a very large amount of street drug. It's obviously gonna be hard to control. And from a public health perspective, that's one of the reasons I think it's most important to really focus upstream and focusing on trying to decrease the number of new people with opioid use disorders. Because one of the things that probably most people in this room know is, for lots of people who are using opioids, it's really, really hard to stop. And that's why we have people doing things that they don't want to do, right? They're shooting up in a school parking lot, they're running from the police all day, they're in and out of jail 150 times. And so it becomes, you know, it's very hard to punish people out of opioid addiction. It just doesn't work. They can arrest people for using over and over again, but they're gonna...
And producing the drugs and really victimizing our communities by bringing this stuff in and the people who are using them, who are addicted, even though that's not a term that we use scientifically anymore, who have an opioid use disorder, those folks really do have a disease. And it is a disease of the reward pathways of the brain. And I think Dr. Frank said it very eloquently, it is very ineffective to try to punish people out of this addiction. One of the sad facts about the Suboxone prescribing is, is that for the, for a large proportion of the people who are going to have their opioid use disorders successfully managed, managed, not cured, managed by chronic Suboxone use, is that for them to be successful on that, now this isn't everybody, but for some of them, they're gonna need to take that Suboxone for the majority of their lives. And so I think that, I think that Dr. Frank, again, I can't believe how much I'm complimenting you, sir. I can't, and Dr. Frank, again, said it very well, that we absolutely have to focus on preventing these disorders from starting. And that's why I think it's so vital, yes, the treatment is vital, but it's so vital to get the prevention out there and get the prescribing practices correct so that this doesn't happen again. Because this is a phenomenon that is repeating itself in history and we really need to learn the lesson this time.
All right. We're getting down to about a half hour left, so I guess my word is if you can get your question quickly out so we can get as many of you on here, and I'm gonna apologize if we run out of time, but I want to get as many people up as they can, so go ahead.
Good evening. As a resident, I support and encourage your humanizing this issue, and I greatly appreciate you. Let's bring it back down to nuts and bolts. What do you do if you find a needle? That's an open-ended question, Kate.
All right, fine. Chris?
I'm gonna go quick, we'll go. Rapid-fire quick answer. It's, so just put it in like a plastic soda bottle and cap it and throw in the garbage.
Do you want to record it?
Nope.
Maya, what, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I just want to add something. Having raised children in a place like Federal Way and off of the 99 International Boulevard corridor, the one thing that I'm going to hand out to parents is, I know this is something, part of the reason I moved out here is for, so my children didn't have to sit on school buses with police officers, because the crime in those neighborhoods was that bad. I remember my daughter being five years old, at a bus stop, she's playing, and I see her walking towards me and she's counting her steps, and I look down and I see a crack pipe and there's a crack rock inside the pipe. And I put my foot over it, I don't want her to see it. And then I think, wait a second, what am I doing? So I take my foot off and I tell her, "Come here." And I point it to, I point it out to her and I say, "This is poison. This is poison. You see this, you tell mom, stay away from it." And when she was 16 years old, she told me, she says, "Mom, I've been off her drugs, I've been off her alcohol, but all I remember is your words in my head, this is poison." And I think a lot of the piece, I understand being afraid, I am, just because I support treatment doesn't mean I'm against accountability. And I understand everybody's feelings and fear of what's going on in their neighborhoods and what they are seeing. But there's definitely things that we can do as parents to help our kids and to prevent these pieces upstream.
All right, Angie?
So I have a quick comment about prevention. So those of you that grew up in the DARE program, that program obviously does not exist anymore. And it did come with mixed reviews on how effective it was. But currently, we don't have anything in our schools right now to address addiction or anything to prevent addiction.
All right, that, Corey?
One of the things that we, over the last five or seven years, we've seen a huge increase of needles in our parks and facilities. It used to be where we'd probably find a dozen a year and we knew exactly where they were. We can find anywhere from a dozen a day easily. And in one instance, we found 80 in one park in one day. That's how bad it's getting. But we encourage people to call the police department, fire department, or parks department. We often make calls where people say, "I found a needle in a playground and I said it on the slide. Can you please remember it?" So please, look at the ways you can dispose of these needles and/or call the right people.
All right. Next. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm John DeBor. I serve on the homelessness task force, support our homeless. And my comment is, I think in the near future, we're gonna be very sorry that we were distributing Suboxone in institutional situations. It is being cheaped, it is being resold, and people that don't have tolerance to it will get high on it. And there's a lot of it out and about, and I think that the story's gonna be that people that intro drug to heroin addiction must Suboxone, right in rehab and right in jail. That's the pattern I see with it.
All right, Tom, please. I have a feeling that I think some people have, is that it is addictive in its own sense. So Dr. Frank, you want to address that?
So I think it's a legitimate concern, so I don't want to minimize that concern at all. Partly because I've studied the history of opioids and the search has always been for a less addictive form of opioids. That being said, Suboxone is really part of a harm reduction strategy. So we're really making lemonade out of lemons, because the opioid use disorder is already there and we're trying to decrease the harm that that person with this addiction is doing to themselves, but also to their community. And we know that when people are on Suboxone, the risk of death from an overdose is cut in half. And even if they're not using it perfectly, even if they're struggling, relapsing off and on, when you look at a group that has been offered Suboxone versus one that has not, the group that has been offered Suboxone is more likely to have a job, less likely to be in jail, less likely to lose their kids, and less likely to die of overdoses. That being said, there's a group of people who are gonna be successful in getting off opioids completely. And if, for people who... And if, for people who can do that, that is, that's clearly, that's clearly the best option, right? But we can't just give up on everyone who's not able to make that transition and let them continue to both harm themselves, but also their community at a rate where we can control it.
Dr. Weller, I'm going to ask you this one since you've been running at the clinic on this. The concern, I think, is legitimate. People, you know, cheat it, they sell it. How does that get control?
So there's a couple of things in that question you say. First of all, we do have lots of things in place to try to control that, and that's part of the reason we are trying to get a Suboxone program, not just providers individually prescribing Suboxone, because a program is a lot better at putting those, you know, how do you leave your urine tox sample? How do you know it's that person's sample and not somebody else's sample? You know, how are you doing all these things to decrease that? What I think is more important to just mention is that this idea that you've heard from multiple people, a quarter of people who start using an opioid like heroin will have a permanent change in their brain. They will never feel normal unless they have an opioid. And that's medical, that's been studied, that is why we are calling this an opioid use disorder. We're not calling it addiction anymore. This is like somebody with diabetes who will never be normal unless you give them insulin. So it's a medical problem, and that's why I don't feel bad when I'm giving this medication to some people, because I am not giving them a medicine to further their high. I'm giving them a medicine to get their brain to know how to be normal, not high, not in withdrawal, so that they can have a normal brain, so that they can learn how to treat their addiction, how they can learn how to get a job, get a house, be a productive member of society. And I also wanted to just further what Dr. Frank said, which is, I know that some of the prescriptions I'm writing are being sold or being abused or being used by other people, but I really firmly believe that if somebody's using Suboxone that they got from me rather than heroin, they are a lot less likely to die, they're a lot less likely to get HIV and hepatitis, they're also a lot less likely to break into your house. And I feel like I'm doing harm reduction, and I completely agree with Dr. Frank that that is not the answer. We are just trying to put out fires and while we figure out how to keep people from getting opioid addiction in the first place.
All right. Thanks, Cory.
Hi, my name is Nina Fionn, and I've seen programs where syringes have had ID tags on them, and I'm wondering why we don't implement a system for our needle exchange that has IDs on our syringes, they're signed in and signed out, so when we're finding needles in our parks, we can create a paper trail of who is leaving these needles everywhere. It's not a cure-all, but it creates a paper trail and it could eliminate some of the needles that we're finding. And, I mean, I'm not an important person in this community, but I am a mother, and I have to check these parts before my children come play. I walk along the discovery trail, I went from being a person that never saw anything to finding four needles in less than a mile plus a few foilings. The foilings I'm not as worried about, but these needles actually harm people and harm our children and our pets. And I want to know, what is the probability of us implementing a system like this instead of protecting the anonymity of the people getting our needles and protecting our children instead?
All right. Dr. Frank's one.
The short answer is that needles and the volume that go through syringe exchanges are pretty expensive. Thankfully, we get ours through the state, and so, and the way they come in this bulk setup, we don't, our state does not pay for an extra money that it would take to put identification on it.
As a taxpayer, I'd rather pay for that than some of the other programs. Yes.
The other thing I would say, the other thing I would say is, it's something about, it's a word called salience, which is like how important other things are to you. And one of the real trademarks of opioid use disorder is that the opioid becomes the most important thing in that person's life. That's why you see people who don't take care of their kids, don't go to work, do stuff all the time. It's not because they're bad people or they don't care, it's that the drug is the most important thing in their life. And the risk of whatever nominal misdemeanor punishment there would be for leaving a syringe on the ground will in no way prevent that person from leaving the next syringe on the ground.
But it creates a paper trail for statistics in our community.
Accountability.
Accountability. It happens.
I think the fundamental issue that a lot of us would agree with is for people with opioid use disorder, that, like we said, it's very difficult to punish people out of that use. It's very difficult, not that I disagree.
So we also represent the community, so we have to be cooperating.
The other issue, the other issue that was brought up previously was people get needles in a lot of different places. You can get them at Rite Aid, you can get them at Walmart, you can order giant cases of them on Amazon.com.
But if these were...
The people who are using our needle exchange, the people who are using our needle exchange are fairly consistently coming to the needle exchange and exchanging the number of needles that they left with. And so, you know, the problem is bigger than those individuals who choose to access our needle exchange. The number of folks using IV drugs in our community far exceeds those who are willing to step into our syringe exchange.
That's absolutely true. The syringe exchange actually has some of the most reliable opioid users in our community. They have to show up at a certain time on a certain day.
Your family members show up.
Okay, hang on here so that we can at least get questions out the right way. All right, I'm going to go right here first, and then we're going to get to this question.
That's a point that needs to be stressed. Not everybody that throws a needle on the ground belongs to a needle exchange program. Please stress that. Some of those needles that you're finding on the ground are not from needles that are on the exchange program. Like you said, a lot of those people do not belong to the needle exchange program. Needles can be purchased anywhere by anybody that has to use. So those needles that you're finding on the ground are not necessarily for people that belong to the needle exchange program.
Maybe they are, maybe they're not. Maybe they're not, they'll always belong in the needle exchange program.
All right, well, let's get to another question, because I want to make sure we get at least as many people as we can, so go ahead.
Okay. I have a statement. My name is Carolyn, I have a statement to make about the community. I'd also like to say that I work in a pharmacy, and it's up to your head pharmacist who sells those needles or not. So if you go to a pharmacy and you see a pharmacist selling needles, say something to the store manager. Say something. Say, "I don't like that and I don't appreciate it, and it's coming up in my community." And if they want to do that, they can get rid of the needle exchange and maybe they'll help become a little more responsible. But my big issue right now is that I see a lot of things and benefits going towards the addiction and the people in the society that have the disease, and I guess it is a disease, it's, you know, that's up to the person. But, you know, my husband is a Little League coach, and when he has to show up an hour before his game to clean up human feces and syringes out of the dugout so his kids don't see that, that's ridiculous. And I want to know what's being done by the city of Port Angeles or Plowton County proactively to get a handle on that.
Those are teenagers.
You were there?
Those are teenagers.
You were there to see that? All right, once, I can...
As a matter of fact, I know for a fact that one of them was an adult because they were not, they left themselves in the dugout.
So regardless of the age or who it was, I can guarantee you that, you know, every morning we go out and we look for needles, but we have acres and acres of property, so we really rely on the public to let us know where their needles are, and that's why I encourage everyone to give us a call, fire department, police department, because you just never know where you're going to find them anymore. Like I said, we used to know exactly where they were, now they're everywhere. And that was the first time I had seen them in a dugout. It was a weekend, I believe, and it's the perfect opportunity. It's a clean, dry place out in the middle of nowhere in Lincoln Park. That wasn't new for us. It's the first time I'd ever seen the needles in our dugouts, but I wasn't surprised. I'm never surprised where we find them anymore.
Well, we also find it in the high school dugouts, in Skunk High School. Last year, my husband was a varsity coach for the girls. And many times, he went in early and had volunteers. Thank God for the volunteers, but I'm worried about the kids in this community who are doing okay, because they seem to be getting pushed by the wayside.
Absolutely. If it wasn't for our volunteers, we wouldn't even be putting a dent into this, because we can only do so much early on. It happens all day long, and in places that we don't even go into probably, you know, every couple of weeks. And so we work with the volunteers, we just work with another group, Helping Hands, to get them supplies, gloves, buckets, picker-uppers, you name it. And the more the people chip in and help is the only way we're going to do this, because it's not going to be the city. We just don't have the manpower to do such a thing.
I understand that, but I still just feel like other kids are getting pushed by the waysides and people in the community, you know? My house is on the west side of Port Angeles, and I tie syringes in my yard all the time. I pick drunks and overdose people out of my front yard because there's a little bit of a down step, and I'm tired of it. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to seem like a cold-blooded person, but how much am I supposed to take?
Yeah, it is frustrating. I can tell you it's frustrating for staff, because, you know, we've been here for a long time, it's something that we never used to have to worry about or even deal with within our work plan or our daily work. And now it's between that graffiti and camps, it's taken up a lot of our time.
Dr. Weller, you want to add something?
The question was, you know, we're getting fed up with this, and what are you doing about it? And I just wanted to thank all my partners that are sitting in this room up here at 7:45 at night, after we all actually worked all day probably on this problem. I just came from Port Townsend, having driven there, and I'm going to go back there tomorrow to work with Wendy on this problem. And I just want to thank all the partners and remind everybody of all the things you just heard that we are doing to fix this problem.
What Dr. Weller just said, I think, is vitally important, because I think that gives you a scope of the magnitude of the opioid problem, is that there is a tremendous amount of effort being put into this. There is more inter-agency coordination between different specialties, different parts of the safety net sector than I've ever seen before, and I'm seeing a lot of head nods from my partners. And we have to be doing these things that are different. Is it uncomfortable to hear that we're, you know, spending public dollars on needles? Yes, it is, of course it is. But we tried just to say no, and it didn't work. We tried locking these people up, and it didn't work. And we can't keep doing the same things, because it just didn't work. We have to get out of our comfort area a little bit, because yeah, this is really damaging our community, this is really damaging our country, and we have to do something different. And this is the start of the different things that we're doing.
We've got about 15 minutes left or so, so we'll go back.
I just want to put something in perspective. Chief Smith just handed me a paper, just to put things in perspective, and also to support the professionals who are around me this evening. Let me share with you three statistics to give you something in perspective about how overwhelming this whole issue is. On an average day in the United States, 3,900 people initiate non-medical use of prescription opioids. On an average day in the United States, 580 people initiate heroin use. And 78 people died from opioid-related overdose. Now multiply those numbers by 365. I just want to reiterate, from my perspective, this is an issue that would demand extraordinary effort on almost everybody's part, but I want to commend the people that are in this room who are working so hard to deal as effectively as they can with the issues we're talking about tonight.
All right, time for a couple more questions, so go ahead.
Good evening. Couple comments, couple of questions. Very frightened the community, very frightened the community. I think we're all very frustrated, and we all think, every day you guys do, and gals do, deal with this. And what everybody here is saying is, what do we really do to help you? What do we really do to help you? I think a lot of people, myself included tonight, I was very well aware of this issue. But I think I wasn't quite as aware that it was a 5,000-year cycle. So my question to you, is there some statistics that show that trying to, because all of us remember, you go into the hospital, there's a little chart, the red face at the top right and down at the bottom, you know, what's your number, zero to 10? And if you were a five, maybe you're getting pushed on the opioid. So is there some statistics that give us a little bit of hope that says that if we do this, really push to reduce the pushing of the opiates, that we might sometime in our, maybe my kids' life, because there's not a person in here that's not here for our kids? I mean, it's just, it is out of control. So that's my one question to you. The other question, I hate to, they sang your phrase, so you got the number, don't I know. How does Plowton County, you gotta be kidding me, make it to number four? You gotta be kidding me. So, Tom, maybe that's where we look at, how do we, I want to go back to being off the radar. So what do we do? So those are kind of my two questions, but I want to leave you with, I guarantee you what, we may sound mad at you, we are not mad at you. We are here to help support you, or we wouldn't be here. So take it away.
You went first there.
So I actually don't feel like people are mad at all. Were any of you here for the fluoride? No, but seriously, I mean, I think people are appropriately concerned, is how I would describe it. And I, I mean, I have kids in town, I live in town too, I'm worried just like everybody else is. In terms of your first question, I think, so we've seen, we saw the amount of opioids prescribed go up quadruple. So it went up 400% since the late 1990s. And I think a lot of providers feel like things are improving, but I will tell you that we went up 400% and we've gone down 12% from there. So there is a long, long ways to go in terms of improving prescribing practices. But honestly, a big part of that is societal expectations. I can't tell you, for those of us who see patients, and people, there are many, many, many people who expect a medication when they come to see the doctor for pain. And that really is a change, and it's somewhat cultural. And obviously, a lot of those pain scales you were talking about, where they had like a "How frowny-faced are you?", you know, those were pushed by the American Pain Society, which was funded by Purdue Pharmaceuticals. So, you know, none of these things happened by mistake or by accident, but I look at it the other way, which is when we know how we got somewhere, that gives us a pretty good roadmap for how to get back to where we were. And clearly, the first thing is improving prescribing practices. So that's something that we can do, but that's something that the community can do also. So if you go to your dentist and you get your tooth taken out and someone tries to write you a script for 60 Vicodin, you need to say, "No, that doesn't make any sense." And probably, some people, many well-meaning people, we do these things out of habit, right? And so sometimes it just takes someone to kind of jar you out of it a little bit. And so that's actually one of the biggest things the community can do, is not, is to lock up their opioids, dispose of them when they're done, not let their kids get their hands on them or other people get their hands on them, and say no, and accept that there is some pain that is part of the human experience, and you can't cure everything with a pill.
All right, Tom, go ahead.
So I've been having some inner turmoil about what I'm going to say here.
So I've been having some inner turmoil about what I'm gonna say here and I hope I don't hurt any of those feelings. But you asked, what can we do to help you guys? In my 20 years of law enforcement experience, I've had this question since my kid was born, how do you keep your kid out of trouble, right? I have police friends who have kids that got in trouble and I have police friends who have kids that never got in trouble. And I went up to those guys and I said, "How do you keep your kid out of trouble?" And they said, "You gotta stay involved every step of the way." When you start letting your kid grow up and go away and like, this is gonna happen sooner or later, you can't do it too soon. And for every kid, there's a different timeline when you let them go. But when they're little and they're developing friends, you gotta be part of their life. And so what I'm, what I'm trying to say is it comes back to parenting. And there are some good parents that have kids that fill through the cracks through no fault of their parents. But there are a lot of parents out there that in my experience, this is no, no data, no stats, no scientific studies, well, maybe there is that I don't know of. But my experience as a police officer, working in schools and working with people every day, a lot of people seem nowadays to think that if they give their kid food allowance and a roof over their head, they're being a good parent. And that's not true. To be a good parent, you have to give your kid guidelines and consequences for their actions. And I don't see that happening a lot. I see, it doesn't matter if a kid is rich or poor, if the family's rich or poor. Poor kids, I know a lot of poor kids that are good kids and I know a lot of rich kids that are a-holes. It comes back to parental guidance, parental involvement. I believe that with all my heart. And so, everybody in here has said the same thing. We're here for our kids. We're here for our kids. I believe you. I believe every one of you here is here for the kids. The problem is all the people out there that aren't here for the kids, we have to pick up their slack. And there's a million different ways to do that. You could be a coach, you can mentor kids, you can help in the schools. You can find that kid that doesn't have good leadership in their life and figure out a way to be that leader for them, to mentor them through their tough times. And it's, there's always gonna be people who want their drugs, who want that easy feel-good fix until it becomes too late for them, they can't have that anymore and they die or they just can't get high enough anymore to get there. But really, it comes back to giving the kids when they're little, give them when they're little and teach them how to make good choices. I went to training last, last week and there was a colonel that was in Mogadishu when the poop was hitting the fan and he wrote a book about leadership. And he said, "To be a good leader, you have to have personal courage." Personal courage to him means making the right choice when it's not easy to make. And kids need to learn how to make those choices. I think that's the beginning step and that's how we're gonna fix this problem.
We have time for probably two more questions, so we'll go here first and I apologize, but we do have kind of a hard stop at eight, so.
I wanted to ask the question. I was a nurse for 38 years and I worked in clinics and hospitals and I went through the time where the drug detail men would come in and take all the nurses and doctors out for sandwiches and were, and were still dealing with the OxyContin. And what I'm wondering is, when this started, we're talking about a lot of this is doctors ordering these drugs. How much education is going on now? I mean, how much training? Because I'm away from it now. I don't know what, what is going on, but if you know what happened with antibiotics again and again and again, I'm sure the same thing has happened with the pain pills.
Right, that Kate, do, okay.
Yeah, a huge amount of training. I mean, nobody's coming out of training now who is not completely aware of this problem. And if any of you are a patient at North Olympic Comfort Network, you've heard our message, which is we do not prescribe opioids for chronic or cancer pain. So it is out there and it is no coincidence that the four doctors that I hired that are all young physicians are all Suboxone trained, whereas the rest of us have had to sort of come to it late. So it is, it is out there.
Some training, some training then with clinics and patients in the community would be a really good thing.
That is what the tri-county opioid, tri-county coordinated opioid response program, one of those sections is all about, is how do we educate our providers that are out in the community right now on how to respond when we prescribe opioids.
And I'll just quickly add that the other piece of education for physicians has been how insidious the drug company detailing in it is. And that has mostly ended, there are laws now including Sunshine indicate what you have to, what you, what you have to disclose. When I was the medical director of Peninsula Behavioral Health, we completely ended the drug company, drug companies association there and the same thing has happened at Olympic Medical Physicians Clinics and.
We don't have.
I just want to add really quickly, thank you for bringing that up. We are having the University of Washington medical students come through the jail and they're seeing firsthand the impact that opiates are having on this community. So thank you for bringing that up and we are having them come through the jail.
So we have a hard, using the challenge words, we're having a hard stop at 8:05.
Right, so real quick, Mike, let's go to you and maybe we can get one, maybe two in, so go ahead.
Great, thank you. Yeah, my sister passed away last month from heart complications due to heroin use for a couple of years. And we wrote out her story, some of her trials and tribulations. So if you're curious of kind of family and kind of user perspective on being on heroin, we'll be passing out some of these stories and probably having a dialogue about it on Our Town Facebook page. I was curious, I saw one challenge that she was faced with. She had a heart condition a couple of years back and that's what eventually killed her, like I was saying. But her cardiologist and many people in the medical community were very adversarial in terms of her getting on medical detox due to her heart condition and medical liabilities. And I was curious if this is a common occurrence or if this was just kind of a special case? And also if there's any, kind of a unrelated question, or kind of related, if there's any safeguards after detox with the six to eight week wait period before you can get into a treatment center? Any kind of safety net for those people once they're detoxed?
All right, so that's kind of two levels of questions. One, I think is about medical liability there and I don't, Kate, do you want to at least address where it comes from?
I feel like I can address the second question a little easier, which is that, I mean, that's what we're trying to do with these things like this Suboxone program that we're starting with the grant from the Sales and Behavioral Health Organization is to make sure that there is not a six to eight week waiting period.
All right, Chris, do you want to try the first part of that?
I'll try the first one. It's a little hard without knowing more about the story, but in, in general, we're trying to de-stigmatize opioid use disorders. And in some ways, I think where we are now with opioids is where we were with HIV in the like mid 80s, you know, where it was like, you know, no one would talk about it, no, you know, anyone who had HIV was dirty or there was a problem. And in some ways, you know, that same kind of stigma occurs with mental health disorders and substance use disorders and physicians are not always immune to that. And so I can't, I don't know exactly, obviously, but it's something that, that we need to work on too and making sure that we're treating everybody, you know, like we would want to be treated. And, and sometimes that doesn't happen, but it always should happen. And so, you know, I'm really sorry about your sister. It's the kind of thing, whereas if she, you know, if she, if she felt like she wasn't treated well, that's the kind of thing we need to work to make sure it doesn't happen to other people.
All right, so we've come up on the end of our time, unfortunately. Obviously, it's a huge issue. We could probably go for about three days at this if we wanted to. I just want to say thanks to everybody. This is a tremendous crowd and I like what I think some of our panelists have said is that it does show that this is concerning to the community and you guys really do care about coming up with a way to deal with this. It's a, it's a huge mountain to climb and we're just right at the.
We'll finish up.
Base camp. Why the hard stop today?
I want to start.
All right.
Thank you. The hard stop to 8:05. Is there a contact there for one here?
I don't think so.
Okay. Well, we're, we're, we're.
I'm happy to have a question. I guess you hear the town. Probably the media is structured. I mean, we're stopping. There's a, yeah, I mean, 90,000 people donate their money, their paychecks, their, I mean, to pay you guys to stay a few longer if that's what is, what is.
I'm not being paid.
So, no, I'm not saying, I'm not saying if it is, but there's still a lot of questions here. I know we can wait till the next meeting, but I'm just, I'm just curious about the structure of it.
I know, right back there. I mean, I'll, I'll tell you why, because, I mean, and I appreciate how concerned you are. I know we're all concerned. I've been at work since 6:30 today and my.
I appreciate that.
Love your old daughter's out there right now and I want to take her home.
And people, but I do appreciate that.
I'm sorry?
I do appreciate that, but you're standing with a lot of the people that have that same situation as we are.
Great, thank you. All right, all right. Thank you. I don't know, I don't know what to tell you then. I guess that's just the time we got.
Well, I think the, this was to be a starting point and I think it really is and I, I think this probably is gonna tether me into some more of these types of discussions, but I hope it does.
Two-year question. This town hall meeting tonight emanated from a request from the public made at a city council meeting by Montezorro. City council, city of Port Angeles is pleased that we've had the opportunity to hold this evening's meeting. I don't think members of the council sees this as the first to the last. It's obvious since it's an issue that will continue to have, we as a community have to deal with this. If, what I'm hearing, we're hearing is that, there are more questions?
Yes, sir.
Then the city council will talk about it amongst ourselves, together with our staff. The city of Port Angeles needs to be a leader. If being a leader means that we do this again with the cooperation and collaboration, these professionals and others in the answer would be, yes, we need to do that. I guess my final thought on the matter is that I think each of these professionals, although they have very, very busy days, and I say, because I take some risks in offering this, but I would guess, more than members I do, they would welcome your phone call. They would welcome your contact with them. This does not have to be your only avenue, not just tonight, but we, as I've said many, many times before, if we're gonna succeed on this issue, we need to work together. I have reason to believe these men and women who are in this room with us stand prepared to answer some of your questions, some of the did not get answered tonight. And that was, I've been speaking, the other council, we, we with us all. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. It's wonderful that you care so much. Thank you for being here.